Welcome back to the Politics Podcast. It's your boy, Mr. Cameron Calvin, AKA Mr. Hip Politics, AKA Mr. 216 to the 202.
Yes, yes.
Uh, we are back for a special live edition. Well, live and tapes. But, uh, live edition because I'm, as, as listeners and folks know, uh, I'm here, based here in Washington DC. And, uh, June 4th is an extremely important date. Uh, way before we get to November, uh, we've got primary elections here in DC. And, uh, as part of the candidate conversation series where you've heard us going all over the country, we've talked to folks from as far as Rhode Island, from Rhode Island to California to Ohio, and now we are right here, back here in the, in the DC metro area, in the DC area, not metro, DC, Washington DC, my home for the last 20 plus years. Uh, I wanted to bring a really dynamic candidate, a person that I've been able to build and grow with of, uh, over the years. He started off as a person, he started off as a person that I, I just watched and I'm a super fan of stand-up comedy.
Right.
Uh, so it started there. So I've, I've been hip to your career for the last 15, 20 years, easy.
Easily, huh?
And, uh, but then, I forgot, I actually now I'm forgetting the story of how we actually met, but in your first race and, and running and like when.
I met you, I met you, um, we were at an event and I was introduced to you.
Oh, yeah, that, oh, yes.
Yes, I was introduced to you. And, I mean, our relationship took on its own, uh, its own, you know, validity.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, um, when I think about what hip politics means, the idea of like mobilizing the political power of hip hop, both the culture and the community and really trying to pull those, to pull those pieces together, but pull like hip hop as powerful as it is, I think you are, you represent the epitome of that in the sense that you come from the culture.
Mm-hmm.
You're of the culture, you've promoted the culture in one of, in the many art forms that, that hip hop broadly represents through stand-up community, but, uh, stand-up comedy, but your presence in the community, as I dug deep into, into your background and the work you've been doing, the people I've seen you, you, the lives I've seen you affect and touch personally, uh, with your presence, with your resources, uh, with your advocacy, um, this turned into, eh, when I was like, there's no better person. If I'm gonna find a candidate here in Washington DC, um, it's a ton of different races going on. I had to sit down and talk with you. So, um, to listeners, people who, who can see this live on the interwebs, people who are listening, um, welcome them to Hip Politics Podcast Candidate Conversations, Mr. Rodney Red Grant.
I give you this because I cut myself for a fan. I got a blood brother in here right now.
I feel you, I feel you. Yeah, um, for people that, people that are listening and people that are also watching, like we, we're doing this as kind of a live meet and greet, uh, with some local constituents, uh, co-sponsored with a Navy Black, uh, Navy Black is a group of, uh, young black professionals in the Navy Yard area of Washington DC, mostly which incorporates Ward Eight, um, right down here in the, I would say in the gentrified waterfront, or right across the street from the baseball stadium and the soccer stadium here in DC, but it's a thriving community of folks, uh, and there's a thriving black, uh, kind of black community. What I would say is a lot of transplants.
Right.
So a lot of people who, this actually may be their first election, um, this primary in the, in election, in the main election in November. This may be their first election as, voting as DC residents.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you're a national well-known name. Like you've, like I said, you've got a 25, 30-year career in comedy. People may know you from some of your, uh, you've got some classic bits, you, you've toured with, uh, the legendary Cat Williams for years, but so many others. But I, I think a lot of people on a national stage have, have been introduced you to there, but you've got, uh, you've done a lot of community work long before you started to run for something. And then, and I've even seen that expand. Um, I'll start here. Uh, you're, and let's, let's get this clear. So you're running for DC Council at Large.
Correct.
That, that, that seat, uh, for, for the council seat, but.
And a lot of people don't know, even though at Large, uh, is and what.
So let's start there.
Alright.
What, what seat are you running for? And then tell me why you're running.
Well, um, first of all, thank you for having me on the show. Uh, I respect the hip politics, uh, and the way you promote it and the way you push, um, you know, I'm running for DC Council at Large. At Large, DC Council is, uh, made up of 13 members. Four of them are at Large, eight of them are, uh, represent the eight wards and one of them is the chair. So I, I like to tell people that immediately because a lot of people like, what's the at Large? At Large represents all eight wards. Um, what made me run? God. Uh, I was in LA minding my business, um, working on my film company, Movios. And God was like, you know, sell everything you have and go back to your city and, uh, and get in these young people's lives.
For real?
Yeah. And so I told my wife to retire. She's a, she was a Santa Monica police officer and she retired and we, we moved back. So, um, but once I got back, I seen all of the issues that were going on. And I seen, I, I saw at that moment that why God had made me come back. So, you know, I'm a spiritual individual. You know, a lot of people might know me in comedy, but that's only 10% of my life. The other 90, uh, 90% is philanthropist, uh, humanitarian, businessman. And, you know, I like to tell people that when I worked for Viacom Network, a, a billion-dollar corporation, they was allotting me hundreds, hundreds of millions of dollars in budgets from the BET Awards all the way down to Spring Bling's. So, you know, I produced over 25 shows for the network and I was like, you know, that was, that's my passion. So that's why my, my program's like, don't shoot guns, shoot cameras. I teach young people filmmaking from thought to theater. And they write the scripts, they produce the scripts and, and they direct the scripts. So we want to make sure that, you know, young people know what filmmaking is. They've made over three movies so far in the city. We started in Ward Eight, moved into Ward Five. And recently we moved it out to Inglewood, California where we, you know, we produced another film with Matt Barnes, um, Baron Davis, Snoop Dogg, and some other young, young people. So we're gonna continue to bring that energy to Washington DC. I think Washington DC can become the next Atlanta, Georgia. I think they can make that $8.2 billion that Atlanta is making. Right now, we're making about $7 million and I want to raise that stake and give kids more opportunities.
So you, you, like I said, you started with, uh, don't shoot guns, shoot cameras. Is that, that's the?
Yep. And then, then we moved to beyond your block.
And beyond your block. So you've, you've had community engagement and nonprofit ventures for years.
Correct.
You've always, you've always been, like I said, engaged. Uh, I think your comedy, especially to the black community has been like, you've, you've been, like I said, you've been a, a, a living legend and, and right there next to other legends.
Mm-hmm.
But I still think, I think you kind of skimmed over it when you said, I, I.
What part?
I'm gonna be in the face. So I'll say this, when, when God calls you, God calls you.
He do.
But to just say, hey, sell all of this, leave, leave what you're doing in LA. And if you, LA is a short, I mean, a, a quick flight, you can get there if you need to, but come back home and really touchdown and connect to those lives. Tell me about what that, that switch was. Cause that means you're no longer doing movies, like, or available to do as many movies. You probably gotta do less stand-up. Uh, I know that continues to pay well and pay the bills. Like, so this is beyond just what I'm gonna do day-to-day. This could potentially change the lifestyle, change your wife's lifestyle, like, and then also not that you ever left DC, but to actually be here and be here every single day and be a presence. Like, what was that journey? Uh, what was that journey like?
I mean, I was living right next door to Snoop. And when I told him I'm about to move, he was like, for real, cuz you going, cuz? I was like, yeah, I'm moving. And, uh, and he supported it, Cat supported it. Uh, me and Cat just finished a tour just now, uh, recently. Uh, and we just, uh, actually filmed this new special called Woke Folks in LA. So I, I still have my hand in comedy. I was doing two days on the road with Cat, then I come home and, uh, campaigned for five days. So that's, that's been this whole time I'm running for city council and, and the, the tour, uh, just ended like three weeks ago. So I just, you know, I'm a multi-faceted person, but I'm also, I can, I can multitask, you know? My brain is, it's wild how my brain works because my wife be like, how you do all of that? I'm like, I multitask. I, I, I can hear people, I can, I can hear whispers in this room right now. Like my, I'm just like that connected. So, you know, DC is my home. I was born and raised here. When you was born and raised in a place and a place gave you so much. When it's time to go back, you gotta go back and get that energy. Because I was a young person, I got shot at, I've been to jail, I've been locked up, you know? I was in that same position as these youngsters. And when I got an opportunity, that people believed in me, I want to be that same type of person that, that youngsters can lean on and believe in. And, uh, it, it is, is really, it's really, um, it's become more than a passion. It's, it's become a, like a life duty now.
When you alluded to this just now, but so you, your first foray, you, you, you don't do, you don't go small, you jump big. You ran for, you ran for mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, ran, well, ran for the, well, ran for the independent, as an independent, for a DC mayor.
Mm-hmm.
And you didn't have great showing for, for a person to come out, I mean.
I, I broke records. I, I made history.
I would say to, to come out of nowhere for, for folks to, to see that, like, I mean, you, you really built a coalition. Uh, I think that was when I, when I first saw it, saw you run.
And they thought I was crazy too. Like a lot of people, I mean, you know, to them, they thought I was crazy, but to me, I want to swing at the bully. Not that that's the bully, but why not swing at the bully? If the bully's picking on everybody, I'm gonna go after the bully.
No, I get it. You go for the big six.
I fight for people. Like, if me and you getting the rumble in here, I'm not gonna run. I'm gonna rumble with you. If anybody I met tonight, I, I'm friends with them now because I, their spirit has connected with me. That's just how I am as a person. And, um, we gotta be more like that in our city. We gotta take care of each other in our city. And.
Sorry, this is a real podcast, this is a real life, uh, perfect, real life, uh.
You can't hide me though.
Oh, who's, oh, who's?
I got you.
There you go.
Yeah, I got you, I got you, I got you.
There we go.
Alright.
My bad, my bad.
It's all good.
You get into it, but what, what I wanted, what I wanted to at, at least, uh, say related to that is, what lessons did you learn? What lessons did you learn in running for mayor that now prepares you to run, like I said, for, uh, city, for a council at large seat?
What lessons did I learn? Um, I think I learned to build your team, um, in a way where, you know, uh, you can continue, because the team that I had, man, the first, man, they were wonderful. They, they did it. They got me to that point. But I just, you know, I felt like God, in this one, he just moved so, uh, some of people, some of those individuals out and moved other individuals in. Uh, I think teamwork is the key. I think, uh, I learned that you gotta raise money, a lot of money.
And this is the, the, can you talk, talk about, this is something that's, that's interesting. People think that all politics is big money.
It's not.
For a council at large seat, correct me if I'm wrong, you can only raid, get, take a hundred dollars per person.
Correct. Then the fair election program, yep. That's where the city match the funds five to one. So every, every five, every five dollars you get, the city will match it five to one. So, you know, if you, if you get a hundred dollars, that's $500, they'll give you. So, I mean, it, it makes sense, but a lot of times people, uh, don't give. So you gotta really be out there, you know, raising. So.
What, what in this, in that past election and this election, what is one community issue? Cause one thing I, I, I'll say, I see you in the streets. You can see it through social media. I see it on other folks' social media. I've, I've seen the signs, I've run into, I think it's been one, once or twice I've run into some of your canvassing operations and people with the red shirts on and so forth. So I, I think you, to that part of like.
We truly, we, we're truly organized. You know, I, I feel like, if you ever look at Rustin Boehner, uh, I think that's his name, that movie Rustin?
Oh, Rustin.
Okay, Rustin, alright. So he showed you how to, uh, organize. And.
Rustin, for those that don't know, was one of Martin Luther King's, uh, right-hand, right-hand guys. It's a movie out on Netflix about his life right now.
He start, yeah, he, he was one of the ones who actually was the brainchild behind the, uh, March on Washington and how they organized that. And I think when you organize, you can get to where you want to be. When you're unorganized, you can't. And that's what I want, I want to see our community get more organized. I want to see black people like each other again, you know? I mean, in a real way. Like when we speak and we say something and we do it, we, let's do it. Let's protect each other again, you know? Let's, let's have a community. And when I talk like this, people be like, man, he's talking crazy, but I'm really serious. I really think that we can have a community that is special, like no other, you know? We the most intelligent people in the world. We come, we come from Africa. Our spirits are, are directly engaged in, in our forefathers and our ancestors, but they, they split us up over here.
You're right.
You know, they.
And this is.
The Willie Lynch, the Willie Lynch concept is in full effect at all times.
So we, to that point with DC, I would say going over the, I've been here, what, 25 years? I got here at college 25 years ago and I've seen this go from deep chocolate city to a, a light vanilla latte. But I think there's, there's.
It's cool.
This is pros and cons, but I'm curious to you, because you, when I look on your website and look at some of the things that you're standing for and running for and wanted, and want, things you wanted to accomplish, talk to me about, I guess, at least one of your key economic points. Cause at the end of the day, we are going through, money is more expensive, people are, student loans is still high, debt is still high. We see rents going up all over the place. I mean, we're in a nice building now, but I might have to move and I'm still doing, yeah, because the rents is going up. Uh, housing causes are there, people are feeling that strain, that financial strain. Obviously, city council and just your city government can't get all of those things done. But there's a lot of money and a lot of development, a lot of things coming to the city. And city council has a lot of power, um, both here in DC and, uh, and, and city councils around the country have a lot of economic power in terms of understanding and, and writing the rules of the road, who can develop, who can, um, where you can put certain things in, and also how budgets and, and those budgets that the mayors may make, how that money is, is appropriated and allocated. What's something that you, if you were to get into city council that, you know, from an economic standpoint, that you plan to either implement or something you really want to work on?
Well, I mean, I'm a pragmatic Democrat. I, I think about, I, I look at ways in a simplistic, in a common sense way. And I think that's, I think politics has gotten away from a common sense way of thinking. If East of the River is struggling the most and when it comes to housing, and our seniors are struggling the most when it comes to housing, I feel like that's where it should be alloc, the money should be allocated, um, because they're, they're struggling the most, you know? We have the highest rate of homelessness right now per, if you take all of the.
Per capita?
Yeah, per capita. Plus, in the last year and a half, it's ra, it's gone up 13% homelessness. Um, our young people, uh, uh, we're not giving them enough equity in school. I'm, I'm big on making sure our young people can get money in school. Uh, I feel like summer, summer jobs shouldn't just be summer jobs, it should be all year round. We should be making sure our, our young people are getting equity. Because I talk to them on a daily basis and some of the, so, a lot of them don't want to be in the positions that they're in. A lot of these youngsters that might be robbing, stealing, get cars, they don't want to be in those, those positions, you know? So we gotta, we gotta be a government that understands what they need too, you know? We gotta be more innovative. In our schools, we gotta bring gaming back, coding, uh, um, cybersecurity, you know? Have our young people making money now. Um, it's a very simple plan. It just has to be implemented. And as a city, uh, uh, a, a person like myself running for a city council at large, I feel like my voice is a big voice and I'm gonna scream it. You know, it's not just about making legislation, it's about who they're gonna listen to, you know? Who can make, who can build those relationships again. Cause we know, me and you, we know that the council and the executive, they're beefing. Maybe not all of them, but most, you know, it, it's, it's a stagnant situation.
Yeah, it is.
And then our ANC's get caught up where nobody's paying attention. And they spending money out their own pocket. Nobody's giving them stipends. They should be making about $10,000 just, just in stipends. They, we should give them that just to help the community, you know? Instead of them coming out their own pocket for the cookouts and things they want to do for, for the community. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm big on that.
Um, we got a few people in the room and, uh, I know we're.
Yeah, we got a good crowd, it is.
Before I get, before I get to any of my, my last couple of questions, I got time for one or two questions. Does anybody have one? Yes. That's your attorney.
I have a question. So what type of?
Say your name.
I'm Kelvin Isom.
Okay.
From, uh, Ward Eight.
Kelvin Isom from Ward Eight.
Nice. I've met Kelvin before. He's a great guy.
So one of my questions would be, what type of roles and responsibilities would you implement into the council seat or council at large seat to change the trajectory of where it has been going so that it can go into a different direction for a better community?
For, for, so for our listeners, you said, what type of roles and responsibilities?
Would you implement?
Would you implement for the council seat, uh, as, as, eh, eh, for council, your current and in the future council seats? So that it can change the.
Trajectory so that it can shape the future generations of the community towards a, a more holistic community. And like you said, you want to build on education.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that sense of community.
So, so just, just, I want to make sure.
Okay.
Listeners, people here, so what type of roles and responsibilities would you look to interject into the council seat? So it can change the trajectory of what it means to be there, be in the council and, and to help shape kind of our community, uh, our community moving forward?
Uh, well, I mean, that's a great question. First of all, we have to, uh, start with love, care and respect again. Uh, I know when I say that.
These council meetings get kind of crazy.
Yeah, but you know, um, somebody gotta bring a sense of love, care and respect back to the city and, and scream it to the top. And when I, I've been saying that for four years and people like, oh, love, care and respect? Nah, it, it starts with that in our community. It starts with looking at each other in the eyes and really, you know, getting to the heart. And you, a lot of people want to legislate from down at the Wilson Building. You know, we gotta, we gotta get boots on the ground again. And I want to be a council member that has a office in every ward, you know? Because I'm representing every ward. And Ward Eight and Ward Seven, you know?
For those that don't know, Ward Eight and Ward Seven are historically black communities.
Correct.
Uh, usually I would say underserved communities in some parts of them, uh, throughout the course of the city.
Well, the craziest thing, um, uh, you know, Houston, it, it, when I was growing up, it wasn't a Ward Eight. It was only a Ward Seven. So Ward Seven was stretched all the way. That's why it's only, you know, seven districts when it comes to police, you know, the seven Ds, you know, there's no eight D. Uh, but I think community, uh, I come from a, I come from the Marion Barry era. Where he, he, he really poured a lot of love and energy into us. He took care of the young people and he took care of the seniors. And those, those two, uh, groups are very important because when they are at harmony, the middle, the middle going, don't fit in. Like, you know, the 25 and up is gonna fit in. But if, if the youngest is running around with no care and love and no understanding of what's going on, and we wondering why the truancy level is so high in our schools, is because they, we ain't giving them what they want. It's innovation that they already like. I just, I just left Blue High School maybe an hour ago and talking to the, uh, um, the, the teen New Deal. They got a whole program over there where young people go after school and, you know, formulate ideas and, and. I was just, I, I was feeling the energy. Energy of young people is what we need at all times. And I'm not talking about just, I'm talking about our teenagers too. We gotta get back into their lives and, and it's a disconnect, you know? And we gotta make sure that, that disconnect is there. I mean, that disconnect is not there and, and fix it. So I want to put that back into it. Uh, but I also want to make sure that the, uh, equity is, is put in, the, the proper equity. Uh, they, they speak on equity being given to Ward Eight, but it, it's not, it's not enough. Uh, you go in some of these homes right now, uh, they, they should be like, the government should be giving people money to fix their homes so they won't, won't move out of them and they won't lose their homes. Uh, so I want to, I want to put, I want to be that, that voice, that voice first. But, you know, pushing equity, uh, across the, the river as much as possible.
It's still going, it's still going.
Is that good?
Oh, yeah, we all good, we all good.
Okay, okay, okay.
If I can see it here, then that means it's.
Okay, cool. Alright, cool. Alright, cool. That'd be messed up, but the whole thing, it all is great information. Oh, Red, you gotta come back next week.
Ah, elections over.
No, it's good.
No, no, we good, we good, we good. Uh, uh, if I can see it here.
It's good.
Um, something that, something that I've started to see in, in this, what, like I said, you, you're of the community. When hip politics, like I said, is a, is a platform that when using the term hip hop and using that as a cultural marker, like hip hop just turned 50 last year. This is 50 plus one. So that is, there's people who are five, there's people who 55, 65, like my favorite rapper is in his 50s. My favorite rapper of all time, Jay-Z is in his 50s. But, uh, I'm, I've just been bumping this little, uh, this little Taka song with Kodak Black for the last few months and Lil Tech, I think, might be 19, 20. It's, it's, the range is there.
My, my, my range is insane. I got a 15-year-old. So I gotta stay, I gotta stay hip. I gotta stay, I gotta stay current.
But that don't mean you can't, you can't mess with your folks like Snoop.
Oh, that's everybody. But Snoop, that's, I'm glad you brought up Snoop because if you think about it, like people like Snoop, Jay, I feel like myself, Dave Chappelle, a lot of people have created culture and we're gonna continue to create culture, right? Uh, and, but we never disconnect ourself.
From the.
From the youngest.
From the youngest and from the, so to that point, with hip hop maturing, with our, our figures across, across the culture maturing and now becoming key voices, I think someone like yourself, um, cause I got the chance, uh, a few years ago when I started.
I be, I always ask people, aren't you, aren't y'all tired of corny politicians? Like, I mean, I ain't, I'm not saying, no disrespect, your favorite politician might be corny, but I, I'm, I'm tired of them. I'm tired of the disconnect, you know? Um, and I think that a lot of us are professionals in this room and I come from a professional background. They try to act like professionals can't come in and do the same job that someone else in politics can do. But we gonna, we gonna do a better job because we come from a professional background. You know, I was talking to my brother from Baylor, right? He just got here, he got his job two days ago, right? But he bragging, that, these are the things, you know, we got so many people coming to DC. We got a, we got a whole melting pot of people coming to DC. So I'm, I want to make sure that, that culture of DC, first of all, is not lost. And the people who come here understand the culture that is beautiful and add to the culture, you know, so.
I think that's one of the things that make this city, that makes this city great. And, but I think it's bigger than DC in terms of you running in the sense, like I was saying, is, uh, a few years ago, also running for a city council seat was one of the legends, the goats of hip hop, Scarface.
Yep.
Uh.
Good friend of mine.
Down in, down in.
Houston.
Texas. Uh, and he was, he joined us, I think that was back in 2019, he came.
One of my golf buddies, one of my golf buddies.
Oh, yeah, he's a big golfer.
Yeah.
Big time golfer.
Me, yeah, me too.
But when I see folks like yourself to, to, uh, to a Scarface, but I see so many different people that you see coming from the culture now actually running for elected office. And, and God willing, you win, but you got, because it, I always, as a political campaigner and, and that's kind of the world I went in. It's like, my number one rule, number two rule and number three rule is win, win, win.
Me too.
Because in order to be able to write the laws, to, to apportion the money, to do all those things, history is written by the winners. So we've got to make sure people from the culture. So, we gotta make sure people from the culture are supported and win. But I, I still think it is, just the candidacy shows folks, not just from, I would say, entertainment, but from the culture, that they can, that they have a place in elected government. Tell me, did anybody, I'm curious question, did anybody try to talk you out of it from, from entertainment? Because I'm always curious.
Not from, not, not from entertainment, when I first got in it, they did try, um, like, people were coming to me like, you know, uh, get out the race, you know? You know, I've, I've had whispers, take this money, all of that. You know, and Cat Williams said it best, you know, Red Grant can't be bought. I already made money, I'm, I'm cool when it come to money. I don't need no money. Like, I, I can retire right now, and comedy and, and movies and film have done that for me, that I can retire right now, go on the beach and chill. But that ain't my goal, that ain't, that ain't my destiny. So, uh, nobody really, they all encouraged me. All my friends encouraged me. Cat Williams came to town, threw a fundraiser for me, Snoop has given, given me money, uh, shucks.
Oh, and he gave you an epic, uh, he gave you an epic little campaign ad too.
Oh, yeah, he keep, yeah, he gave me a nice campaign ad, and that's big, that, you can't pay for that. That's a free, you know, that was me being in LA a few weeks ago and doing a Netflix special for Kat. And the next day, the dog was like, come over to the house and, uh, we, uh, because I'm a gamer also. Me and him got a Madden league called GGL, so I went over there, we did our GGL thing, boom, he did it, did the drop. But, you know, I'm a big, I'm a big gamer right now, you know, I, I, I tap in with so many different genres, you know? That's why, you know, my opponent said the other day, yeah, he wants to front for the gram. I'm like, nobody wanna follow you on the gram. I'm not front for the gram, I'm just, people follow me.
I think that's, I, I think that's important, that when you start talking about what it means to really tap into folks that people, like you said, know, that can cut through, uh, and break through. But we have a messaging problem, we have a connection problem.
That is it.
And I think at one of the, what could, some people could say is one of the scariest times in recent history, with the advent of AI, with, like I said, with inflation, with so many things going on environmentally in our, our world. And that we need to not, and things are happening to us that we're not actually listening, because we don't have those right messengers.
This, let me say this, so, not to cut you off, like, my last race, you know, politically, science-wise, you know, I wasn't supposed to win, right? I didn't know that. But politically, science-wise, I wasn't, so they didn't really put a lot of energy. But this one, you know, it's a neck and neck race, and I've gotten my Wikipedia cut off, I've gotten my, you can't even Google me, right? If you Google me, it, no, none of my professional stuff is gonna come up, it's just all comedy stuff. And if you, and if you put Rodney Grant in there, Rodney Red Grant, a white dude gonna pop up. And, yeah, that's, and that's how serious it is, that's when I know I'm making headways. You know, when they snatching my signs down out the street, and when they going in my yard, and I gotta, I'm catching them in my yard. I caught somebody in my yard.
In your yard?
Yeah, he took four signs, he came back to take the, the, the fifth and sixth sign. And like, my wife was, came downstairs, she was like, he's out there. And I ran there, I ran out the house, he was, my neighbor was out there with his dog, he was like, he's telling your signs around the corner. He came around the corner with my signs, I said, man, why you got my signs in your hand? I mean, I, I was a little bit frazzled, and I said, man, put my signs down. Drop my signs, got on the bike and rode away. Like, I mean, I got a video of it, but that's some scary stuff to me. You know, what about if he was on, on another mission?
Even that, that shows the power, I mean, no change comes without, without strong resistance. I, I wanna, I wanna wrap up on a lighter note, a lighter note, this is something we ask all our guests. And I'm curious, I mean, uh, as a candidate, um, and, and as a, as a campaign vet like myself, one of the, music is really important.
Heck, yeah.
Music you walk out to, if you go into a speech, the music you decide to use in your campaign ads, like, the music that just gets you going, and the mindset to make sure you, you ready to be out there? Because it's, it's a lot, kissing babies, shaking hands, run, I mean, you running from, this, this, this will tape it right here. You about to run to another campaign event to see more people and so forth. But, uh, like I said, we're hip-hop, we focus on, we focus on hip-hop, uh, culture. So, I know, uh, I, I've been in your car, I think, one time, like riding, so I, I know you, you're ear to the street.
Yeah.
Give me your big three, your big three of the music that is getting you going through this campaign.
King Von.
Wow, for real?
Yeah.
King Von, that like a bunch of stuff, or any?
No, just the story joint, that, uh, yeah, that give me hype every time. I listen to some Biggie, like, you know, just Biggie, this period give me hype, and then I, I listen to They Not, They Not Like Us. I see dead people. Yeah, yeah, I mean, he put it together on that one, you know? Sometimes you gotta pop out and show. Sometimes you gotta pop out and show.
You're right, you're right.
And that's, and, you know, that give me hype, you know? And, uh, you know, Mus is my friend too, so for him to have that, have that, and with that, that, that makes me feel good.
Well, um, Mr. Grant, I'll definitely call you Mr. Grant, hopefully, future councilman Grant. But, uh, Red, as a friend, I wanna say thank you, man, for, for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
Let folks know where, in, in, in the video, we'll make sure you, like I said, that this is coming out pretty quickly after we, after we do this. Uh, because the, the elec, the local election is coming up in, uh.
It's already started, it's already started, the early voting is already there. Uh, and that ends on the second, which is Sunday, Monday's off, and then Election Day is June fourth. You know, it all, it all came so quick, but I do wanna do one thing, I wanna shout out, um, Team Red, all the people who worked on my past, um, campaign, this campaign. Oh, yeah, when I said Team Red. Well, you know, and, um, they, they work, they work harder than me. Shout out to the Rich Kid, uh, uh, Foundation, who's in here right now. They, we've, they help feed people every week, and I, I, I just tap into them, and they doing the work. Feeding the homeless, feeding the less fortunate, uh, and people like that. So, my, my team, Troy and them are in here, my video team, you know, my, my brother Hollywood is in here. But I just wanna tell you, if you wanna find out about Red Grant, go, go to GrantAtLarge, uh, G-R-A-N-TAtLarge.com, and just follow the movement. We got about five more days before the election. If you in the room, you wanna come knock doors with us, that's what we do. Uh, we're gonna win this election, we're very positive, we're very upbeat about this election. We really understood the science of this one, even when they saw, said it, it could not be done. We went from a, a position of ten points, supposed to be ninety to ten, now it's fifty fifty, uh, and I like our chances. Yeah.
Well, Rodney, Red Grant, uh, candidate for council at large here in Washington DC. I wanna thank you again for joining.
Thank you for having me.
Podcast, candidate conversation, sorry, I think we ran over a little bit long, but.
It's all good. Sometimes we gonna pop out and show.
For all our listeners, thank you, make sure you tune into Hip-Hopics everywhere you can, uh, everywhere you get your podcasts, on all platforms. GrantAtLarge.com.
Yep.
To, to donate, um, to, to donate or support the Red Grant Movement, um, and with that, we're out.
Hip-Hopics, baby!